Good evening, people. I call to order the March 15, 2021 School Committee meeting. And our first routine matters will be to look at past minutes. We have approval of open session and executive session minutes from March 8th and March 10th of this year. Does anyone have any problems with those as written, or do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. We know the premier is not with us just yet. Roll call vote. Ms. Saros.
Did you not?
Ms. Saros, you're on now. Come on. What do you got?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Aye.
Ms. Dylan.
Aye.
Mr. Kukoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Those minutes are accepted as written. Thank you. And moving on. Yeah, what did I just do? Excuse me. Yeah, communications are our next order of business. Dr. Hackett, do you have any communications for us?
Thank you, Mr. Devon. Just a couple. They are in your packet, which was previously distributed. You have the South Shore Educational Collaborative Update to the School Committee, which includes some year-end financial information as well as FY22. You also have two sets of subcommittee minutes, one from Finance and Operations from January 21st, and one from Policy and Education from March 4th. You don't need to approve those, but they are part of your packet. And that actually is all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. Moving on to C is gift approvals. We have two this evening. First.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Just a point of information. Are we, under Communications, are we to acknowledge what we have been receiving in the last day and a half?
Well, if you'd like to, you have the floor, Mr. Kukoris.
Well, I think we should just let the public know that we have received multiple emails from various teachers, and I think also from some representatives from the union expressing displeasure with our decision to reopen schools. And I think, you know, I just think.
Screen is showing.
Yep.
I think for the. Thanks.
Pardon me.
No problem. I just think, I just think for the record, we want to acknowledge those emails are public record. And I, you know, like to reaffirm our commitment to our teachers and the value we believe they bring to the system, and acknowledge that we did, we have received close to 200 emails. So I'll give it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, and we know that we had our start to our high school today, and, you know, myself, Mr. Chafe, the mayor, Dr. Hackett, Dr. Scully were up there watching. I was kind of amazed and, you know, thank God I don't have to navigate those halls because the one ways and all the things that go with that. The kids handled themselves in exemplary manner. They normally do so. I thank them, and I do thank the teachers also. And moving on to gifts. I have the, uh, first check is from Bay State Textiles, gift to schools totaling $128.50. Two checks totaling $128.50 from Bay State Textiles. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
I have a second, okay. The second one is the Menace School Kindergarten Center, gifts to school totaling $180. One deposit totaling $180 for the Menace School Kindergarten Center. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote to accept said gifts. Mr. Mayor, are you with us? Okay. Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Aye.
Ms. Dylan.
Aye.
Mr. Kukoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Those gifts are accepted, and we thank you all for helping us. Each and every gift is greatly appreciated, and you make us better because of them. Moving on from the superintendent and staff, interim review of the harassment policy. I believe that's Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Chairman Devon. In your packet, everybody will find a copy of the bullying harassment policy, which should look very familiar to everyone in the sense that the vast majority of it is unchanged. One of the things we'd like to review tonight relates to the U.S. Department of Education's new regulations related to Title IX that actually came out in May of last year, but went into effect in August of 2020. Obviously, a lot has happened this year, and we're a little late getting some of this to you. Please understand that all principals were trained in the changes back in October. We had council come out and do an extensive training with people who may be involved in certain investigations under the bullying and harassment policy, so that we are up to date in terms of procedures and policies. One of the pieces that the School Committee does need to weigh in on, one of the elements of the legislation requires the School Committee to choose a standard of evidence. What type of evidence would we be using as it relates to findings in harassment cases? And there are two choices that could be made. One is the preponderance of evidence standard, which I would suggest is one that we have used over time as we have conducted investigations as it relates to the bullying harassment policy. The other choice would be a clear and convincing standard of evidence. So those are the two choices that the School Committee must choose from. The legislation requires that choice so that in every single case, an investigation, the same standard is being used, which allows for consistency in the outcomes of those particular cases. So in the packet, you will see on page 27, highlighted pieces that relate just to that element, the standard of evidence. You can see on page 27 of the overall packet, K, the standard of evidence. And I do understand there's an extra D in use that should not be there, but you can see that it includes the level of evidence the investigator will use to determine whether an offense of this policy has occurred, and that we, and this is our recommendation, will be using the preponderance of evidence standard. On page 28, you'll see under number seven, just a reiteration of the fact that that would be the standard that we would use in investigation. So the School Committee needs to select one of these standards and vote to accept it. We are recommending the preponderance of evidence standard. We recommend that with the knowledge that we have used the standard in the past in numerous investigations that we have done, and we would be looking for a vote from you folks in terms of affirming that in the overall policy.
Okay, I must confess that I have some of it. I don't have all of it here. I only have to page 10.
Mr. Lee, could you refer to the actual policy page numbers? I think that you're looking at the electronic packet, which several members are working off a printed packet.
Yes, so in the, just the packet of the actual policy, it'd be page five.
Okay.
Standard of evidence under letter K.
Okay.
And page six, under seven, all of the complaints will be reviewed based on the preponderance of evidence standard.
I wonder if this isn't something, you know, because this is almost like a first reading. Is there? Is this something that we would remand to our, but, uh, Policy Subcommittee, and then have it come to the greater committee?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
You actually foreshadowed the point I was going to make, which is that we talked about it at the Policy and Education Subcommittee at our last meeting, and we recommended moving forward with the preponderance of evidence language. And, but we were careful to state in the context of that meeting that it should be open for the full School Committee discussion, but we did vote on bringing it forward, including that language.
Excellent. I wasn't able to make that meeting, and excellent job on that. So because it was brought forth with a motion, with the passage from the Subcommittee, it's brought to us as a quote-unquote "first reading", so therefore, you know, we'll look at this, I guess, thing amongst ourselves, and then vote on this at our next meeting? Ms. Dylan, you have thought on that?
If that's what the Committee is most comfortable with, I know generally we don't take same-night action. So unless, Mr. Lee, if there's a sense of urgency in terms of doing it this week versus, say, next, then, you know, I think it's fine for people to have a chance to reflect on it.
Certainly, the Committee can take the time it needs to review the policy in this language, and we can certainly revisit it next week.
Mr. Devon?
Yes, Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Just a quick question from Mr. Lee. I understand that this standard, the preponderance of evidence, is pretty much used in most civil cases. So it would make sense that we would probably go with that standard. Is that correct?
Yes, our council suggests that we should keep the standard. Again, we have used the standard for all the years that I have been here, and so our investigators are very comfortable with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb-Lamair, for helping us with that. I guess we, it will be read again next week. Okay. Moving on to the Student Opportunities Act. Mr. Lee?
And that's me again. Thank you very much, Chairman Devon. So also in your package, this is again something that due to COVID, we're a little delayed in getting it to you. Under the Student Opportunity Act, Chapter 132 of the Acts of 2019, school systems had to submit a student opportunity plan, and it relates to Chapter 70 funding. As new funds were made available through that act, districts were required to submit a three-year plan. And there were two types of plans that could be submitted. One was for those districts that received more than 1.5 million additional money in Chapter 70. That was the long form. The other was for districts that received less than $1.5 million in Chapter 70 increase, and that was the short form. Sadly, we fell into the short-form category based on the increases to Chapter 70. So in that, we initially were supposed to submit a plan by April of 2020, and then, as you all know, COVID struck. So they moved that deadline to May of 2020, then again to June of 2020, which is when we actually submitted ours. They moved it again to August and ultimately to January of 2021, but it's come due in terms of they are now beginning to issue grant opportunities related to the submissions of the student opportunity plans that have been submitted. Again, we submitted the plan back in June of 2020 pending your approval, which we had tentatively scheduled for the June 22nd School Committee meeting. And then again, so many different things happened between then and now. So in your package, you will find the student opportunity plan that we submitted. It focuses on a number of things that we are committing to do to really address some of the inequity issues that exist in not only our district, but in all districts. It focuses a lot on evidence-based programming, and we identified several areas where we would concentrate our efforts over the three years. And I believe you've known of all of these because they're works that we've been doing over time. So one of the evidence-based programs that we indicated in the plan that we would be pursuing is the workshop model. If you recall, the workshop model is a writing math, assumed to be a reading program in our elementary schools that we have done extensive professional development on, and we continue to do so. Another area that the plan allowed us to identify was facilities improvements, which, as you all know, we've undergone at East, and we are beginning the process of undergoing itself. And we clearly identified those things in the opportunity plan. We spoke about some of the early college opportunities that our students at the high school have received, particularly in collaboration with Massa Sawyer Community College. And we have kids not only in the alternative programs, but also in the learning enrichment programs that have been taking classes at Massa Sawyer, and that's a program we've slowly been expanding over time. And again, another area we identified in the opportunity plan. We spoke about the metrics that we would analyze as we assess whether or not subgroups were making effective progress, and we spoke to the MCAS in math and English. And we also spoke about chronic absenteeism, which until this year had been our primary focus of ours as a district, trying to make sure the kids were getting to school to get the education that they deserve. As you read through the plan, you can see how we identify ways that we communicate the families in the community through our CPAC, our recently-formed English Language PAC, the School Advisory Board that meets quite frequently, and the innumerous events during evenings for parents and students to keep them informed in terms of what we are doing as a school system. So this is, again, the plan that we submitted back in June. It needs to be approved by the School Committee, and, you know, the delay has been for all the reasons that you're aware of. One of the things, again, I would point out is that very recently, within the last two weeks, the state has come forward and have released approximately $5 million in grant opportunities that relate to this school opportunity plan, and we will be submitting applications for those grants very soon, prior to the end of the month. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about our submission. But again, whether this is a first reading, or we can revisit this next week, at some point, I would like the Committee to vote whether or not they approve the plan.
Mr. Devon?
Yes, Dr. Hackett, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just do, just to add to what, or not add, but really come back to what Mr. Lee said is, this is, this is connected to the new funding formula that was passed by the legislature last year. And the idea, if you remember, was that there was going to be a significant change in how schools were going to be funded, primarily school systems that have high populations of students who are at risk. We were not going to get any new money out of Chapter 70, so the money we got was the money we got. But all school systems, regardless of whether they were going to receive additional funding or not, had to submit the plan. So as Mr. Lee has already stated, all of this, but I just want to reemphasize it. Our approach was to really just kind of affirm through the application what we were already doing and what we were already working on, because one, it's what we're doing, and two, there was no additional funding for us to be considering expansion into anything else. So again, truly, this is all work that has been ongoing. It would be if the Committee would entertain approval tonight, given the fact that it really is not connected to anything financial and its work that's been ongoing, that would be great, so that we could get the competitive grants in front of the Finance and Operations Committee, so that you could review those, because obviously those then would be us applying for money moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. Are there any comments or questions from anyone from the School Committee at this time? Hearing none. I have a couple of comments. One, we know that this has been ongoing for more than a year. We know that it's not, for lack of a term, integral to what I would say is policy. What it is, is us competing for a set amount of money. And I don't have a problem with the same-night action on something like this, because it is time-sensitive. What say the Committee? Is there anyone that has a problem with the same-night action on this, which is not a policy, but is looking towards money? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to accept in a second on this.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, I have a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Mayor, you with us?
Yes, aye.
Aye, thank you, sir. Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Aye.
Ms. Dylan.
Aye.
Mr. Kukoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That's accepted unanimously. Thank you very much for that. And moving forward, administrative updates.
Yes, it's already been mentioned. We were back full day today at the high school. Several of us had a chance to go through the school a little bit and just see what looked like a really pretty normal school day. It felt good to have kids back, knowing that they were going to be there for the entire day. I think faculty did just a fantastic job. We had our desks set up in our cafeterias, and lunches were served, and everyone was facing the same direction at six feet apart in the cafeteria. You know, it's going to be an adjustment. I can imagine that students and staff at the end of today, and probably by the end of the week, will be back adjusted to the schedule. But it is, it was great to have kids back in and to be on that path. So I just wanted to thank everybody for all their hard work to get us there, get us to today, and the work that's going to continue to move forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I certainly want to thank everybody that was involved, Dr. Hackett, Dr. Lee, and all the faculty that made this happen. It was really a historic day here in Brantree. You know, unlike many other communities, Brantree is, you know, ahead as far as getting our students back into full-day, all-day school. And the high school was perfectly poised for it, based on the fact that the cohorts were already collapsed. I toured the entire building. We went to many different classrooms. We looked at the distancing and, you know, the system that has been put in place is extremely efficient, and the health and safety of the staff and students has been seriously taken into consideration. And I will tell you that it was refreshing to see all of the students in this hybrid program back to a full day, a full day of somewhat normalcy for the first time in a little over a year. It was Friday the 13th when school closed for full-day operation, and here we are in the Ides of March, and we are back at the high school for full-day operation. So I commend all of the staff, as well as the students and parents, for all the hard work that's been put in to get to this point. And it was important for me and the chairman and vice chairman to attend, as well as superintendent. I think it was a wonderful experience for all of us, and I was very happy with what I saw. And in regards to the lunch area, it's very well organized and enough capacity to handle a lunch period in which you had every student in the school system previously, as far as numbers go. So they really have done a great job at accommodating and making sure that we have the health and safety of everybody in mind. So once again, historic day today, and thank you to Dr. Hackett and all the administration for all your hard work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments or questions from anyone from the School Committee?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Cobb-Lamair, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yes, I like to reiterate and be thankful to everyone for all the hard work, administration, the teachers, the students, the families. We know this has been unprecedented time, and we're in the middle of a global pandemic, and hopefully, we see the light at the end of the tunnel here, and I appreciate all the hard work everybody has done to get us to where we are. I know that today was the first day, so I don't want to be too critical of things, but I do have a couple of comments. And one of them is, I know, I've heard that the girls' bathrooms were not accessible. A number of the bathrooms were closed, and that's a concern. And also, I heard that the media center, the Wi-Fi technology wasn't too successful. So how are we going to move forward on those two issues going forward?
As you said, Ms. Cobb-Lamair, today was the first day. I think we could just kind of take a breath and know that we got everybody back. I'm aware of the Wi-Fi issue. I know the high school administration is, and now, whereas on this call, is aware of the bathroom issue. So we will, we'll reach out to high school administration tomorrow.
Okay.
There are other issues. You know, obviously, we don't meet all the time, so if you do have that kind of feedback, it would be best if you could send it to the high school administrators, so that they can get on it.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Thank you.
And any other comments or questions from the School Committee before we move on to our Subcommittee reports? Hearing none. Moving to, let's see, four, from the School Committee. Policy and Education Subcommittee, which is chaired by Ms. Dylan. Ms. Dylan, you have the floor.
Thank you. So at our last meeting, we introduced the potential resolution around the 2020-2021 MCAS. So as a reminder, from time to time, we're called to take up resolutions here as a School Committee. You know, on pertinent topics, oftentimes, these resolutions are initially drafted by the Mass Association of School Committees, which is our governing body, and then towns will modify them or simply take them on to add their voice to the other towns in terms of advocacy. So you've seen the draft of this particular resolution a couple of times, but I will summarize the main points for people who are listening. So number one is that the class of 2022 who missed the 10th grade MCAS last year not be required to make it up, and that also there should be a moratorium on all high-stakes testing for this school year. And the third point is, the resolution actually goes further, is to say the moratorium should be extended for three years. So as I mentioned last week, in my opinion, I see our options as adopting the resolution in whole or in part, or not at all. So again, no MCAS for last year's 10th graders, no MCAS this year, and no MCAS for the next three years. This resolution has already been adopted by the MASCE naturally, but also the Mass Association of School Superintendents. So I'm happy to open this up for discussion before I share my own point of view. So, Mr. Chair, you can do with that as you see fit.
Excellent. Well, I think it's something that we should discuss. I think this is that type of discussion that, you know, many different school districts are having, and I think it's important. Let's roll call, go right down. Mr. Mayor, where do you stand on this subject matter?
Well, I, to be honest with you, I never really was a fan of the MCAS, and, you know, the main reward you get from it is when you score in the top 10%, you get a nominal amount off of state schools. So the reality of it is that, you know, it's been an ongoing question as to whether, you know, we are here to teach for the test or get a teach. So I mean, and I really never had, I've never been a big proponent of it or fan of it in general. So, you know, I think that we've had some unprecedented times, and I think this is an opportunity for us to make things fair and equitable for all the students. So, you know, I'm not sure what other major tests would be, but as far as the MCAS, you know, I have a pretty strong opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it should be pointed out that any type of vote we take tonight, I believe, is non-binding. You know, there are the powers that be that can conceivably, you know, the working wills that we work to. Moving on. Ms. Saros, where are you on this subject matter?
Again, like the mayor said, I'm not a big fan of the standardized tests, especially where the kids have been out, them coming back fully as of today and April 5th. It'll benefit them to actually have in-class time instead of focusing on the test. They can go, they can get some more material that they need, that they might have missed during the entire year. I know between switching from remote to hybrid, students could be all over the place. So I think it would benefit all the children to not have them this year.
Okay, thank you for your opinion. Ms. Cobb-Lamair, your opinion?
Thank you. Yeah, I feel the same way. I know that tests can be an important part of our toolkit, but they can't measure everything that is critical for our children to learn, such as scientific inquiry, citizenship, physical health, emotional wellness, artistic expression, and especially the key 21st century skills such as teamwork, critical thinking, creativity, have kind of been put on the back burner because of high-stake testing, and subjects such as history, art, music, drama, and PE have all been cut. So I think even in a good year, you know, quote-unquote, the overuse and misuse of high-stake standardized testing in public education has long raised concerns. And in light of all the disruptions that my co-members have mentioned that have been caused by COVID-19, I think that waiving the standardized testing requirements is especially urgent now. So I agree. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Dylan, your opinion, please?
So I think my opinion about MCAS is pretty clear. I've always been pretty open about it. But for me, this time around, this is really a no-brainer. So my reasons include things like these tests take up instructional time in a normal year. They can cause some students really undue stress. The tests weren't created by teachers. The measurements of rubrics in Massachusetts seem to keep changing, and the results don't come in a timely enough fashion.
And the results don't come in a timely enough fashion for us to really do anything about them. And that's all in a normal year. So our teachers have their own methods for evaluating students, and that's what we should focus on. I've never personally bought the argument that this test is how students will learn to take tests. Kids are evaluated and tested in many ways. And knowing that Mrs. MCAS will find themselves unprepared to take the bar exam or a trade licensing exam. So that's to name a few reasons. So this year, to me, the primary focus in our school should be on not interrupting our precious instructional time as well as negatively impacting our students' social emotional well-being even more. So as such, if the tests continue on this year, I will refuse the MCAS for my son once again. But I'm hopeful that we will pass this resolution and add our town to the list of others that are standing up for students and for teachers on this issue. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Mr. Kukoris.
Well, I think I I I believe I echo the sentiments of most of the previous speakers. As far as this year goes, I think that, you know, the time that we get back fully in person is better spent fully in person with teaching happening and not testing. I think where I differ from from the group is that, you know, and again, as someone who taught in at the college level, I think it's important that we understand that we have and maybe the MCAS isn't the perfect example, but there has to be some kind of testing that is subjective, that shows us where students are at a particular point in their education beyond what happens in the classroom. Because, you know, as the pool gets bigger, you know, when you're in when you're in college education, you're you're now past the population of how you rank with students in Massachusetts. You're in the population of students in the country and sometimes the world. So, you know, I I I don't think of them as high-stakes testing. I think of it more as an evaluation of where students stand. And again, as someone with experience, it was sometimes disheartening to me that students came into my classroom as a freshman and couldn't do certain basic things that I would have expected. So I think there needs to be some kind of testing. I agree with delaying it or postponing it this year because of the conditions. But I don't agree that it should go away unless, you know, there's something else to replace it that makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. Kukoris. Mr. Chafe? All right, Frank, you have to unmute Mr. Chafe, please.
And all I can do to unmute myself. Hold on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I would be in favor of seeking a waiver so much as the way we got one before we first went from pencil and paper to the computer. I do believe we need some type of standardized test to see where we are in a community against other communities to see where our weakness and our strengths are. If we if if it doesn't, if we don't go forward with it this year, definitely keep continue testing for next year or whatever, because we're not doing our students any favors. Whether it be MCAS or some type of standardized testing, these kids need to be tested to see where we are. So that that's where I am on that. I'm not a big fan of the MCAS myself, but I do believe we need to be tested to see what we're teaching, where we where we land in the communities against other schools.
You did, Tom.
What else is new? I find myself going back and forth on this. I remember what we were, what were we, the MCAS, then when we jumped on to the park testing method, and then we went back to MCAS. And I agree that we have to have a mechanism whereby we measure our children. But some of these, you know, some of these that are just a one-size-fits-all and it's, you know, it's like taking our children and jamming them into either square square holes or round holes or however you want to say it. I've never been a really big fan. There again, I I harken back to the time where we, you know, we were on MCAS, then we went to Park because that was the 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 new shiny thing. Only to go, well, that doesn't work well either. Let's go back to MCAS. So I do think we have to have a way to evaluate our students. But I I in in this this crazy time called COVID, the last, you know, 12 months where education got turned on its head and hurt to the ground, I don't I don't think it helps our children by doing it this year. I'd like to think that, you know, you know, and I refer to them, Desi and some of the other alphabet soup people will come up with something that's a little bit more user-friendly for our children to evaluate them. So that's where I am with this. I'm going to go back in the other room now because there's a bit of an echo between myself and Mr. Chafe. And we will we'll vote on this now. And let's remember this is a, excuse me? All right, this is my own echo. You might want to.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Kukoris.
Before we vote, can we decide what the substance of what we're going to vote on is?
Well, exactly. I was going to go go to that. I mean, it there's a few parts to this. I mean, what say the committee? Do we, you know, postpone this year? The the whole three-year thing. And let's remember, whatever we decide tonight is not really binding. But it does show where we are on this. And I'd like for it to, shall we say, be representative of how we truly think. What say the members? Are we good with voting on, you know, suspending it for this year? And, you know, and this year only? Or is it three-year? Please, you know, comments from the committee, please.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I just make a suggestion for what it might be worth or not worth?
Please.
I'm wondering because the because the MCAS has been moved into May, and I think there's been feedback and discussion here tonight. And this obviously is the decision of you and and the chair of the Policy and Education Subcommittee as to whether or not the resolution language should be looked at by the Policy and Education Subcommittee in light of the discussion tonight, because it really is the resolution language that you would be voting to support. And some of that language may be in conflict with what was said tonight by some members. So just a suggestion for what it's worth or not.
Ms. Dolan, what how do you feel on bringing it back to the subcommittee to be able to get the language straightened out?
I'm not sure, quite literally not sure, if it's the majority of the committee that feels it should only be the one-year discontinuation and not the other two parts. So, you know, I think it would be useful to find out how many people might be willing to support the resolution as written. If there is not a majority support for it as written, then I think it should go back to the committee. But I'm I guess I'm just not sure if everyone or most of us are saying that they're not in agreement with all three points.
Okay, so it's almost like a procedural situation. And how it's written right now. Please, Mr. Kukoris, you have the floor.
Well, why don't we have someone make a motion and we'll we'll see how things proceed?
Yep, so I will make a mo- can I make the motion? Sorry.
By all means, yes, you can.
I will then to pass the resolution for Braintree Public Schools as written in our packets, the the full text of the resolution.
Would you please read that? It's for clarification.
Yes, one second, please. I just have to reopen that document.
No worries. Take your time.
Okay. Whereas the MAS C membership and MAS C Board of Directors have previously and repeated repeatedly taken the position of opposing high-stakes testing, including the MCAS. And whereas the COVID-19 remote learning model has negatively and disproportionately affected students with learning disabilities, students of lower socioeconomic status, ELL students, and students who identify as minorities. And whereas the social and emotional trauma, both individually and collectively, has yet to be truly realized in the students who have experienced the shutdown of their local school buildings and separations from their peers and supportive adults. And whereas the students of the Commonwealth have already missed valuable face-to-face instructional opportunities with their teachers and would benefit from focusing on those important instructional opportunities and social emotional supports. Therefore, be it resolved that the MAS C rejects the calls for the students of 2022 who missed their 10th grade MCAS testing be required to make it up during the 2021 school year or ever. We demand that those students be held harmless for not taking the MCAS and that their graduation requirement shall be determined by locally controlled voices of the school committee and school administration within the remaining graduation requirements of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Additionally, we reiterate our call for a moratorium on how all high-stakes testing for the 2020-2021 school year, so all students can benefit from their time being focused on direct instruction. And we urge the legislature to enact a moratorium on high-stakes testing of three years. So again, to sum up, it's no MCAS for 10th graders who missed it, no MCAS in 2020-2021 school year, and supporting the legislature enacting a moratorium on high-stakes high-stakes testing of three years.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments on this before we vote?
I'll just, if I may, Mr. Chair, through you.
By all means, you have the floor, Mr. Kukoris.
I'll just kind of reiterate my comments that unfortunately, I will have to vote against this because of the last part. I I can agree with the first two pieces. If someone's willing to amend the the third piece, then I'd be happy to support it. Otherwise, unfortunately, I will have to vote against it.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Kukoris. Ms. Cobb-Lamere, you have the floor.
Can I just mention that right now we have two bills that are pending in the legislation that would stop the test scores and MCAS that would be penalizing the students? And approximately 17 other school committees are supporting this same resolution. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Yes. A redirect to Mr. Kukoris, you have the floor.
Just just a response to the previous speaker. There are 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts. So the fact that 17 supported it does not really sway my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the school committee on this subject?
Should I make a motion to amend the motion?
Okay.
To go forward with the first part, first two parts and strike the third part for you.
Okay, that's a motion with an emotion. What I'm hearing from Mr. Chafe is a modification of said motion just to drop the high-stakes testing of three years. In other words, predominance of what was read by Subcommittee Chairman Dolan is fine except for the part that says enable a moratorium on high-stakes testing for three years. So it's just the last sentence that states for three years. I have a motion by Mr. Chafe. Do I have a second on that motion to modify?
I'll second that.
Okay, now, what we're voting on now is the modification of the original motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Wouldn't we vote on the original seconded motion first?
Well, no, i- i- in process is how how I see it as far as Robert's Rules of Order. If Mr. Chair, Mr. Chafe's modification does not pass, it reverts back to yours, like his modification did not work. So we're voting to modify that three last years. And if you and now if that does, what it does is it does modify the original. Well, I've seen, I I mean, and I tell you, we've never really had this type of a a rule of order. But I believe this is the proper way to amend if an amendment has i- i- if it passes vote. Does that make sense to you?
It does. It's just a little tricky for someone like me who would vote for the original motion. But now I don't know who else would vote for the original motion. So I don't know if I should vote for this one because the other one wouldn't pass. Like, it's just a little tricky. That's all.
Okay, I understand that. Yes, please, Mr. Mayor.
I I think that, you know, first of all, it's it's a resolution. And I think that from my perspective, either support or you don't, only because it has to be consistent with the other communities because it's one concerted effort on behalf of school committees. So I think if you modify it, it really doesn't speak to what the other school committees have already passed. And furthermore, it really doesn't, you know, the overall impact, it's not like we're changing anything. We're just making a statement through this resolution. So I really don't have a problem with the way that it's worded. And I think that, you know, it would take a lot more than just this to make that change happen. But you were correct as as far as accepting the modification to the original motion. And that amendment should be voted on first. And if it does not pass, you go to the main motion and take the move from there. Thank you.
Well, in the spirit of doing things properly, as far as Robert's Rules of Order, we have before us a modification that all it does is ask that we strike. And let me make make sure we got this. Let's see, benefit of school, benefit of the time, focus, and direct instruction. We urge the legislature to enact a moratorium on high-stakes testing for three years. All right, so we're we're going to vote on the modification. Let's see, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, no.
Ms. Saros?
No.
Ms. Cobb-Lamere?
No.
Ms. Dolan?
No.
Mr. Kukoris?
Yes.
Mr. Chafe?
Yes.
And I vote, yes. Motion does not pass. We will go to the original motion as read by the Subcommittee Chairperson, Ms. Dolan. We'll vote on that. And a yes will be in support of said resolution. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamere?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kukoris?
No.
Mr. Chafe?
No.
And the chair votes aye. All right, so we'll attach our names to this as far as how it was written. Thank you, Ms. Dolan. I we get kind of wrapped up in procedural the 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 ball of the ball of wax that can be procedurally, but I appreciate everyone's patience on this. Ms. Dolan, you have the floor to continue your report.
I'm a little woozy from all that excitement, but we'll try to move on. Item on the agenda is the consideration of first reading for the school year 2021-22, 2022. Hard to say calendar, so I'm assuming I'm passing this to Dr. Hackett or Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. The calendar should look relatively familiar. First of all, it looks like a regular school year, which would be outstanding to even contemplate at this point. We would be looking to really kind of emphasize giving some student orientations and and student opportunities during that essentially the last week in August, which would be on the 30th. And then we would bring our students back, actually, our staff back on the Tuesday after Labor Day and then students back on the Wednesday after Labor Day. So again, it's a first reading, and I would ask for your approval. Been happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Does the school committee have any questions on this calendar, how it's been proposed?
Mr. Chair?
By all means, Ms. Dolan.
Do you happen to have the visual, Dr. Hackett? Or are we just kind of reviewing the the start dates?
Let me see if I can manage that. Hold on.
Sorry. Putting you on the spot.
I'm not really good at this.
That's quite a group. Oh, boy.
They never let me in the AV club, that's for sure.
I used to run it.
Oh, God love you.
I don't know what that says about me, but.
That was the fun job back then.
It was, and then I went and started selling A V equipment, so.
Okay, cool. You have.
Thank you.
I didn't want you to see me with my tongue hanging out as I was trying to work this.
Nice job, though. It looks great. Any comments or questions on this? Uh, from the sub, uh, I'm sorry, not the Subcommittee, the, uh, the Greater Committee?
Through the chair, if I may.
Yes, by all means, Ms. Saros, you have the floor.
Know if it's in the, forgive my ignorance, the contract, the negotiations with the snow day, seeing as we know how to do virtual day. Um, i- is there any leeway in that? I know you can't plan a snow day, but if we know a storm's coming, instead of adding it to the end of the year, we know a snowstorm's coming, we do the a real blizzard bag, what some of the teachers have done this year.
Uh, that's a great question. My, my understanding, unless it's changed and things do change, but Commissioner and Department of Education have been very clear that they are no- not going to allow blizzard bags or remote days to make up for any lost instructional days due to inclement weather or any other reason going into next year. So it's not even an option we can contemplate. If that changes, we could come back and revisit it.
I believe that's something we'll have to collectively bargain with the uh, the B E A.
Well, there's nothing to bargain because it would just.
As of now.
Right.
Did that answer your question? Um, Ms. Saros?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the school committee?
Mr. Chair.
By all means, Mr. Uh, Kukoros, you have the floor.
I believe it's a first reading, but if there's no proposition, I'll make a motion to um, accept the school calendar as presented.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We're still the, this is a meet and consult provision with the B E A, so if a first reading would be better for us, so we could have a little bit more time to, to uh, to talk to them about it.
Okay, Mr. Kukoros, please, you don't have a problem with us having a first reading, do you?
Oh, no, no. I, 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 I miss, miss her, and I thought Dr. Hackett was asking for um, approval this evening.
My side thought wasn't clear.
Well, because Mr. Chafe is going to raise his hand on the first reading. So what do you say? We uh, obviously, we'll, we'll, we'll take this up at our next meeting after having the B E A look at it, and we'll go from there. Does that sound amendable to the committee? Okay, sounds good. We'll, we'll be bringing that back. Um, Ms. Dolan, I believe you have consideration for a second reading and the approval of two policies.
That's right. So we have a second reading uh, for B D C appointed committee officials, and we received an update to that for packets um, to note school physician and registered nurses. Um, and we also added director of nursing, so you probably saw that update come through, I think it was today. Um, and the other policy is around filed B G F suspension of policies. So if there are any questions or concerns or discussion about those, um, please feel free.
Any comments or questions from the Greater Committee on these two policies? How they're written? Okay, here and none. I guess I'll, I'll entertain a motion to pass B D C appointment of committee officials.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call boot. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kukoros.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe. And the chair votes aye. That's a unanimous adoption. And uh, I have before me B G F suspension of policies. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I have a second. Second. Roll call boot. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kukoros.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
No.
No. And the chair votes aye. Motion passes six, one. In moving on to be Finance and Operations Subcommittee update. That Subcommittee is chaired by Mr. Kukoros. Mr. Kukoros, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the Finance and Operations Subcommittee met last Wednesday, the tenth. And on the agenda was an overview of the fiscal year twenty-two town budget. Um, we had Ms. Taub and Mr. Spellman present to us a brief overview of the town's um, outlook for the two thousand and twenty-two budget. And um, to say that it was sobering would be an understatement. Um, we all realized the impact that COVID had on the finances um, of the town and, you know, of, of the general government. And they went through some of the details of where the shortfalls were and where they project them to be. And some of those things are, you know, ho- hotel taxes, excise taxes, meals taxes, um, and many other revenues that, some, some one-time revenues that come into the town that we don't anticipate having for the coming year. So um, the, kind of the bottom line of the whole discussion was that although there are some puts and takes as far as federal stimulus money coming in and things like that, the overall shortfall is close to ten million dollars on the town side. And each department head at, at that point, um, when we met last week had been asked to present um, a level service budget with the contractual increases and then reduce their budget by ten percent. So we will, we do have an agenda of meetings as we kind of get our way through budget season, so we can present a, a budget to the mayor by the end of April. And our next meeting will actually be this Thursday, um, the eighteenth at seven P M. And we will, um, with the superintendent, look at the first pass of uh, our budget to uh, include what uh, some of the areas would look like uh, with the projected ten percent budget cut. So, uh, you know, I wish I could uh, give the committee better news, but as we all know, uh, you know, the situation economically has been difficult. And, you know, we certainly as a town have to address the challenges, and hopefully we can work together to figure out how to uh, best put our fiscal year twenty-two budget together. So we can have a public hearing in a couple of weeks and a vote and present it to the mayor uh, at the end of April. So I don't know if I can answer any questions, but that's a brief update on what, that's the only thing we covered. We tabled all the other items on our agenda until this week.
Are there any uh, questions or comments from the Greater School Committee about this revelation?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'll just say that, you know, we, we are certainly coronavirus has created um, quite a um, economic challenge, and, you know, this, this started um, in twenty. It started at, at the end of um, the budget, which would have been our fiscal twenty budget, which was um, the last quarter was, you know, extremely difficult um, as far as revenue sources. Uh, we did everything we could to make cuts. And um, we had uh, some employees that we had partially funded and partially laid off, about sixty employees on the, on uh, the Ask Me Side, the Down Side. So there's a number of things that we tried to do to save as much as we could. But the revenue sources that we are typically used to have not been there for us, and unfortunately, uh, we are not receiving uh, the amount of money that some other communities are. If you read today, I think Quincy's getting like forty-six million. I would take half that at this point. I mean, um, there's there's definitely um, financial constraints. Uh, we are looking at approximately three point six million uh, in Rescue Act money. Um, but overall, uh, we're looking at, you know, the entire budget as we always do, and we're looking at anywhere that we can um, find savings. And, you know, as we move into um, next, you know, several weeks, we look at our supplemental budget that we need to create. We're working on that. Uh, we're trying to find any unspent um, money to cover uh, expenses that need to be covered uh, towards the end of this year, but it's a very difficult time. In two thousand and four, it was a difficult time. In two thousand and eight, it was a difficult time. Coronavirus has created a um, continuous loss of revenue that uh, has really put us in a very difficult financial position. So you know, we're, we're all going to work together to do our best and come up with um, the best budget we can, provide all the services we need to provide, but mindful of the fact that uh, we are um, in the middle of a pandemic and it isn't over yet. And there is a rebuilding time that will take place after that. So, you know, I think at this point, the commitment uh, from from me as mayor and from, from my administration is that, you know, whatever we have to do at this point to get ourselves to a balanced budget, uh, we will rebuild uh, as new revenues come in, and we're committed to doing that. So um, we're in the early stages of this, but we do have a significant uh, challenge ahead of us to get through this budget and, and to bring it balanced uh, to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments from the uh, school committee?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Cobb-Lamair, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, this probably is directed to the mayor. Is your um, the revenue reductions, is that online somewhere where we could look at some of the things like that, or, or do you is there someplace we could go and look at the overall town budget, or are you working on that now?
Um, through the chair. Currently, um, you know, we, I have my finance director, chief of staff uh, and um, department heads putting together uh, their budget projections as to what um, they will need because of, you know, obligations, contractual obligations as we have on the school side as well. And um, you know, we are, have done a first run and we are waiting. Um, I think in about a week, I'll get some, some better information from the department heads. So it is a work in progress. But uh, you know, we certainly want to be transparent as we go through this process, and those numbers are based on uh, contractual obligations that my finance director has estimated. So we, we still are waiting for um, more definitive numbers from the department heads uh, as well as um, almost fixed costs. Um, we could say as far as um, health insurance, uh, health insurance and um, retirement benefits and things of those nature that, that nature that have to be paid for and, and cannot be reduced. So at this point, formally, there is no um, document, so to speak, because it's still a work in progress. But, you know, if any member wishes to uh, meet with me and my staff, I would be more than happy to do that individually and and uh, kind of go over the budget where we're at. So more than welcome at any point, um, yourself or any member that wants to see where the numbers are and how we've kind of got to where we are, for sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the School, Greater School Committee? Okay, my turn. First of all, this news, i- there's no other way of putting it, it's devastating to, um, i- i- this is going to ask everything we have, every full measure of what we have, e- e- every single one of us on this committee. Um, I don't think it's out of line at some point in time that Mr. Spellman and the chief of staff come before us and give a full report. What is a full report? The full report will be that they will have handouts for us so that we can look at exactly where this money is, you know, to the, to the dollars and cents. Um, I did try and look at something. I, I, I thought at one point in time someone was going to send me a link to it, but it will have to be something that we, shall we say, put out there for our people to see so that everyone will know in full transparency where we are, what our receivables are, and what we're, wha- what our responsibilities are. Um, thank you. Um, Mr. Kukoros, is that the end of your report?
It is, Mr. Chair, unless there are any other questions. Just uh, to clarify what the ten percent would be. Um, that would be on our projected budget, seven point six million dollars, so.
But we already had half a million taken off our, our uh, capital projects. Okay, moving on. Um, it is time for public comment. And based on the fact that we have quite a few things to discuss in executive session, we've got about fifteen minutes. Uh, let's remember what the rules are. You have three minutes in which to uh, make a statement. It's not really um, engagement type of a situation. Um, you can make statements. If people do have case-specific questions, they can write them to us if it's a policy matter or, or to central office, or if it has to do with your child, and it's a question about how you want to do something for your child. The best way to do that is through the email system to central office so that we can take each individual child a- a- as it should be. Um, let's see, another thing is, you know, keep it to what's within the purview of the school committee. And please be respectful of any and all opinions. Um, Dr. Who do we have as our first person?
Kaylin Potulichio. Kaylin, you're unmuted. I hope I get your name close.
Good evening. Close enough. Um, just a comment. I just wanted to say a quick thank you. I know Mr. Kukoros had stated earlier in the meeting that there were something over two hundred emails, you know, people displeased about school going back to full day today. Um, I can probably tell you, there were probably, for every two hundred people he got an email for, there were probably two or three for each of those email that were so excited to go back today. So I just wanted to say a quick thank you um, to all of the staff at Branch Republic Schools. I don't have a high schooler. I have an elementary school student, but I know that there were so many high school students that were so excited to go back today. I heard from a lot of parents so excited to be back, have that, have that normalcy and just, you know, it's been a year, so I know that they were very excited to be back. I know my elementary school student is so excited for April fifth, he cannot wait. And I just really wanted to give a shout out to the teachers. I know that many of them feel like they're not getting the credit that they deserve. But we see them. We thank them so much. I know there's a lot of negative rhetoric these days between unions and administration and school committees, and a lot of that negative comment that we just want to make sure that they, we know that we thank them, we see what they're doing. Um, you know, a lot of them feel like they maybe can't speak out. We know a lot of them wanted to be back in school today. Um, they're doing fantastic. We see it. Their actions speak louder than their words may often do that. So we see what they're doing for our kids each and every day. So we just really wanted to say a big thank you. You know, we know it's been a long year, and they've done an incredible, incredible job. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hackett?
Um, Mark Moore.
Mr. Moore. Good evening. Mr. Moore? Is he unmuted?
Yep, uh, I think it dropped off.
Okay.
That's all the hands that were up.
Okay, well, that, that uh, end our public comment. Um, we will now enter an executive session.
I've got one more, Mr. Devon, if you want.
Oh, okay, sure. Don't worry. Thank you.
Got it answered. Julie Swain?
Yes, Ms. Swain. Good evening. How are you? We can hear you.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, I was just following up to my original emails and Zoom meetings at some point, if somebody could follow back up with me on where we stand with the additional mental health clinicians and adjustment counselors for the schools to help with the kids, um, in the classrooms. I know you can't answer it today, but, um, if somebody could follow up for me and let me know, and then I can let the other parents know who are also inquiring about it. Thanks so much.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Hackett, we.
Yeah, how are we? That's it.
Okay. We'll make note of that and get back to Ms. Swain. Um, what is it? Uh, six, executive session. Uh, we know that we're gonna enter an executive session, so therefore I'll need a motion to go into executive session, and then a motion to end this meeting. Consideration to enter its executive session pursuant to Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A-three. Discuss the strategy for the negotiation of collective bargaining as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the legal position of the school committee as declared by the chair. I believe I'll, I'll need a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
And I have a second. Roll call vote to enter. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemare?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kikoros?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so we'll be entering an executive session. Um, I will need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A second, okay. Roll call vote to end this meeting. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemare?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kikoros?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, people. Um, we'll be sending out, uh, a, a, a Zoom number in order to reconvene in, um, executive session. Thank you, people. Bye now.